Welcome and thank you for choosing FreeConferenceCall.com. You're helping people around the world communicate for free. You are the only participant in the conference.
Shoot, she can apply for a job here. They used to have all kinds of openings. Charleston, South Carolina. She likes it down there.
I'm going that way.
I've laid it there. Oh, it's fine.
It's fun for you.
Makes stuff more difficult. All right, you got everything you need?
Me?
No, I think so.
I think so. Logan's checking on B-75.
I think that we'll get to open up for how they like to do that personally.
Did you get, John got those stuff?
I did not.
Got some stuff. Hour, couple hours ago.
Okay, yeah. I can email it to you.
Some stuff, but I think you tried to send some other stuff that didn't.
Yeah, I didn't get everything.
Actually, something is not.
I called your Mr. Booth today. I called your Mr. Booth today at the nursery.
I have so many emails today.
Mr. Booth at Booth Nursery today. Booth Nursery.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
All right, I'm sorry. I hate this. You know the nursery you told me about?
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
I called him today.
Okay, I got you that time.
And he gave me some good information. Pretty much everything he said, right on. He said they're hard to find.
Drive it here.
Time to get to be that age, they have to do them in the furlap.
Never volunteer.
Should have been the pipe.
All right, there's the two things I got, John.
She's only planted a spranger, nothing died. They have to say she should plant at least 20 feet apart. They ever crown it and they start dying, so. I'm gonna put that in there, because right now they've got them on six foot.
Sorry, I didn't dress up.
But I haven't had a chance to talk to him about it.
Do I need to log in again when they're talking?
Hey, John, will you answer your phone if I call you?
What's that?
Will you answer your phone if I call you?
Sure.
Is my thing going to go through the slides? It's here.
Do we have the link?
I don't think so.
Not sure if we have an amp here on. You can ask. I'll show you here if there are.
If the other two planning commission members are on the phone, please let us know.
That was both of them.
Okay, great. I'd like to call the Franklin County meeting of the, hmm, let me start that over again. I'd like to call the May meeting of the Franklin County Plant Commission to order. First order of business is roll call.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
Mr. Colby?
Here.
Mrs. Crawford?
Here.
Mr. Doss?
Here.
Mrs. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Clement?
Here.
And Mrs. Mitchell, Miss Atwood, sit present to attend the meeting and one at.
Next order of business is approval of the minutes from a March 10th meeting. Are there any questions, corrections, additions to the minutes? If not, the minutes will stand as written. We'll move now into public hearing. First matter before the planning commission is application for a special use permit. We will hear from staff now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request of John Methino, representing the property owner, South Lake Motorsports Incorporated, and requests us to modify the conditions on an existing special use permit that was granted by the Board of Supervisors in January of 2019, about 15 months ago. The two areas where Mr. Methino is requesting that the conditions be modified, area number one pertains to landscaping, perimeter landscaping on the property, and area number two is fencing on the property. Your staff report contained information on existing requirements and requested requirements. Right now, as a special use permit has been issued, the requirement is a double row of green giant arborvitae trees or equivalent with a minimum height of six feet at the time of planting. They need to be planted 12 feet on center with eight foot separation between the two rows planted along property lines with parcels. And requested modification, Mr. Methino is requesting to be able to use Eastern Red Cedar as a substitute for arborvitae for a height of two to four feet at the time of planting in a single row along lots 200 and 208, a double row along Hampton Drive. Regarding the fence modification, the current requirement is a split rail fence with wire mesh. And the request is to eliminate the split rail fence and to substitute it for a welded wire fence. The staff, as we see the petition from surrounding neighborhoods opposing the modification of the approved special use permit conditions, regarding conclusions and recommendations, the applicant stated that the cost and availability of six foot high trees is the reason this request is being made to modify the conditions. Considering the surrounding neighborhood's concerns for the RV park impact on their neighborhood, staff believes that the proposed modification is not in keeping with the concerns expressed by the community and the purpose and intent of the original conditions required by the Board of Supervisors. It should be denied. We have to try to answer any questions you have.
Does anyone here have questions for staff? If not, we'll hear from the applicant.
Well, it's a whole plethora of things in there. Thanks for entertaining me in this.
To the, to the commission to approve. And we kind of, you know, assumed that it would be not a real cost, major cost to do these, because they were pretty, they sounded standard. But we worked on our drawings for a long time, and it took us a long time to get the drawings. We got our drawings. Finally, we finished all of our back and forth with Terry and everyone at the county on February the 19th. And so we started costing the campground. And the six foot arborvitae trees came at a cost of around an average of $150 per tree, and we need 450 of them the way it was approved. That's $67,000 that we hadn't counted on spending. And the split rail fence is pretty much the same thing. The average, the lowest estimate I got for the fence was 123,000. We didn't count on that. We didn't count on a lot of things that came along with it, but there's science behind the, all of the other stuff. There's really no science behind these two factors. So I ask that we come back to you and see if we can do some amendments. We should talk with Terry, and he said we had to go back through the whole thing. So I'm asking if we can switch the arborvitae to an Eastern Red Cedar. And this comes straight from the Arbor Day Foundation. And if you scroll down and you read this one versus the arborvitae from the Arbor Foundation, they are almost verbatim, word for word, same tree. I mean, the same characteristics. They have a 40 to 50 foot height, spread of eight to 20, they grow two to four, one to two, I'm sorry, one to two per year. They're native tree to Virginia, arborvitae is not. They're a lot less expensive. And they grow, you can shape them to grow in the same shape. If you don't shape them, they'll grow real tall and just have a lot of bark, but you can shape them to, to be a, like a pyramid. I'm not sure what, what word they're using, if we scroll down a little bit. There we go, back up just a hair. It can grow in a pyramid shape, same as the arborvitae. I have another slide with arborvitae, and you can see that they have pretty much the same characteristics. We're asking that we reduce those, either, you know, change the species or reduce the height or something, because the six foot height is real problematic, because it's not an industry standard to plant a tree that tall. because the six foot height is real problematic because it's not an industry standard to plant a tree that tall. Most of the talls are one gallon, two gallon, three gallon pots, which none are six feet tall. You can buy six feet, but you just can't find four hundred of them in the same location. And if you do, you gotta have them shipped in from somewhere else. That was the thing for the, for the trees. The fencing, the split rail fence really has no, it has no value other than aesthetics. And so we're asking just the split rail part come off, and we just put wooden, wooden fence posts up with wire, welded wire fence, which I've read, I've read the, um, the neighbors' complaints. And, you know, when you go down to their complaint about the fence, it says that, "Let us begin by clarifying that the applicant offered the split rail fence." That's just not true. We didn't offer anything. That's what was brought to us by Tommy Kundoff and said, "Will you do this?" And when we, we agreed to it, we didn't know we'd have to put seventeen hundred linear feet of fence in. So that cost is just outrageous, and we can't afford it. And the, dealing with the, trying to reduce the number of trees, you know, I think, I like to think that we're doing a good job in the neighborhood. I mean, we've done a wonderful job with the marina, and we're trying to do one here. And I, I look at the opposition, is what I call them, their paperwork they sent in. And that, you all have it. It's got the school buses and, I mean, I guess that's their argument for why they need a screen. Well, you know, when I bought this property, that was, those were there. You know, I'm not leaving those. We're taking these out because that's where we're putting our campground. But they also talk about, can you pull up a picture? I guess can, um, turn down the two. This top picture right there shows the view, um, coming down after drive. Then you can see the campground clearly, where the campground's going down. The date of these pictures, April the first, I don't know when. But we filled out our application on twentieth, I think. Open up the, uh, watch, watch, watch this video. This video was taken two weeks after we submitted our application. This is Bill Taylor and Mr. Pace cutting our existing buffer off of our land. They have a dump trailer full of pines that they have cut off of our property. They don't own this road, they have a right of way to their house on this road. We own this land that they're on. So after they cut off the trees, then they submit a request saying there's not a buffer there. You know, we called the police on them, of course, and we have trespassing orders against them. They're not allowed on a property. But if you watch the video as you go by, you'll see the amount of trees they cut off. And I think we called Steve about this when it happened.
I thought you were right.
Mr. Pace signed the, um, applica, or the petition. And if you look inside of this, um, trailer, you'll see what they've cut out, which kind of opens the whole area up. So they make it look like we've done something or we need something that we had there. You know, my, my argument in my application was there's already some buffer there. Why do we have to keep adding more to it? That's why I wanted to reduce some buffer. Well, now they've cleared it out and, and, um, it does need buffer. Get to Hampton. I took this on the way over here. That's that same view right there. When the leaves are on. That's the same view that it's basically, um, in that April first picture. A couple of other things I just want to make, make clear, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, but Bill Taylor sold his house on February the eighth of two thousand nineteen. He doesn't even own a house there anymore. Yet he's there cutting their, cutting their trees and signing petitions as a homeowner. Boyd Long sold his house March the twenty-sixth, doesn't live there anymore. He's on this application, he's going to have this permit. I just, you know, we've tried to do the right thing and, but we've fought and fought and fought to where we're just ready to throw our hands up and say, you know, we just don't want to fight no more. So we can't build the campground with the, with the cost the way they are on these trees and this fence. So we're asking that you can, you know, reduce the trees, reduce, change the species, change, help, you know, help us make sure that we get this built because otherwise we just can't do it and not keep fighting with them as well. And that's all I have, unless you have a question.
Anyone have questions for the applicant?
Oh, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Excuse me?
I was just gonna make a comment.
Uh, okay, well, I think I need to ask if anyone wants to call in.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. I forget about that.
Do we have anyone on the phone who would like to speak to this petition?
This is all new to us.
Me too. You don't have anybody on the phone?
I haven't had any, a line submission.
If there's no one else to speak to this petition, we'll go back into regular session, and now you can make your comment.
Thank you, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
If you, just one moment, I'll, I don't see anyone physically here. We did receive some correspondence that was in your packet that Mr. Mathino referred to. We also received some today, which I think you all have copies of from Mr. Timmons.
Mr. Timmons, yeah.
I don't know if we've received any since the meeting started, so I think those are the comments that we've received to date.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mathino, for coming up tonight, and we understand your concerns. Just make sure that the commissioners noticed that the staff did put underneath, where they actually denied this as far as their recommendation, that they did recognize that there's other options to consider to reduce the cost. So I've come up with hopefully a plan of action. And my thoughts are, is to not go with the eastern cedar, but to go with the arborvitae, but reduce the size to two to three feet. They are the faster growing tree. I've actually researched this tree, bush, whatever you want to call it. I called Booth Nursery today and spoke with Mr. Booth about them. And he did tell me that trying to find that many is tough, and finding them at six feet is tough because what they have to do is instead of, you know, most of the time when you buy a plant, you buy it in a black bucket. But when you get up to a six foot size, they all have to be dug up and put in burlap. So that's a huge difference in, in purchasing a, a plant like that. But he, he told me that they also should be planted ten feet apart. This might be some future for you guys because they, if you put them too close together, they'll actually start dying out and push up against each other too much because of the fast, the way they grow so fast. So he recommended ten feet apart for growth on that particular variety. As far as the fence is concerned, I don't really have a problem with the, the, um, wire fence. And as long as there's wooden post, I think that'll help with the aesthetics of it going along with the buffer along the, the property line. Now, I'm really, it, I'm up in the air about making it a double row all the way around or a single row. I'd like to know y'all's opinion of that, what you think.
I, I'd like to say that my thoughts on the fence was for security to keep people from the campground into, from going into, over onto the other people's land. To my way of thinking, just a welded wire fence will do that better than a split rail fence giving them something to climb over on. And with planting all the trees, I don't, I don't know where, where the looks of the split rail fence really adds anything. And I guess I,
If I'm not mistaken, and there are already a boughware fence up?
Yeah, there is a part, parts of it.
As far as between the two trees, I would actually rather see it be a native species than a non-native species. I think a two foot tree would take way too long to, to do any good. I think maybe if we could get four foot red cedar trees, I, I could work with that. I guess my question is, is the intent to screen the property or just to punish the applicant because he didn't know what he was agreeing to? That's my thoughts.
Is that a, I mean, is that a normal thing to get a four foot? I, I don't know.
I, I don't know, he just said two to four foot, and then I'd assume if,
Well, I wondered about the eastern cedar, and I should have asked Mr. Booth that today about the eastern red cedar because it is native to Virginia. And it, don't, I've never, I think I've had a tree between my house and another house, but I think that was that, um, that other one that people buy. So I've never had any experience with these.
Did he indicate the cost of these trees?
The cost of the ones that are six foot are around a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and seventy-five. Plus planting, yeah. So they are quite a bit more, the others will run about forty, fifty, the smaller ones of the arborvitae. And I don't know about the eastern red cedar, but you've pri, you've done your research on that, right?
Yes, they, um, the two to four will run about thirty-five to forty.
Okay, so.
My, my take on it is the existing vegetation there, when the leaves are on such as they are now, it's, it makes quite a good buffer, it seems. And with these evergreens being planted behind those to take up the slack.
In the winter.
In the, in the wintertime, I, I can't see whether it would be detrimental to what we're trying to get here.
Do you see where the, um, where the property line goes? Not on Hampton Drive, on the Armstrong property and the Ball property.
Armstrong property should be at the top of the,
Right, it's at the top right corner, I'm sorry. And the Ball property is at the bottom right. Now, as of right now, that Armstrong property is all woods. There's no houses, nothing on it. On the Ball property, there is a house, but the house is more up towards the road than it is towards the back, if I'm not mistaken. So, I mean, I, I just don't see that we need to put a double row there. I understand on Hampton Drive where the people, which is, which are the folks that we've heard from, you know, their concerns about the, the barrier.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's where all the concerns come from.
Right, so I'm thinking a single row of the, now, I don't know about the, the eastern, maybe they should be on a, a six foot, um, spacing, or I, I don't know much about them.
I think that the existing issue because of the arborvitae is twelve feet, twelve feet apart. And then the rows, eight feet.
Oh, okay, so that's what you've got them as, is twelve foot apart? Okay.
Yeah, I only go, like, three, six.
Do what?
If you do the two rows of twelve feet apart each, and stagger them, then there's actually six feet between trees.
Right, but if we went to a single row, we could go ten feet apart. Correct?
I'm sorry.
If we did a single row.
As it's written now, it'd be twelve feet.
Right, but we could change that to ten foot. If we, if it was a single row, we could bring them a little closer together, okay. All right, well, I'm,
We can, we can pull up the, the characteristics of those trees in, I mean, if you want to look at them.
Do y'all need?
And I don't know if I can speak.
Well, actually, they have it in their packets too, or actually, I sent them an email about them too.
In, in the, um, the opponent's package, they, they say they talked to someone, but they don't say who it was.
Right.
Most of the stuff they put in here is not what the Arbor Day Foundation said.
Right, okay.
So, but, I mean, I, I, I did send you the one on the eastern red, I did send you the one on the,
I looked it up myself, yeah, I looked it up. Okay. Well, I'm ready to make a motion, I think.
Uh, is there any other comments?
Hello?
Hello?
This is Commissioner Colby, and I'm a,
Yes, please do.
I'm trying to do what I need to see this. There was a, uh, careful process, uh, in twenty nineteen, to put together certain conditions that was basically, uh, as I see it, basically a good agreement between the county and the citizens of this area, uh, certain conditions to help on the lower aid effects, um, propose camp ground, the activities that need to go on. That was, I'm sorry, I really wanted to unilaterally, recommend changing those conditions. If the applicant could have come here and presented us with a proposal that he had worked out with the residents, and it wasn't contradictory or controversial, but it had the support of the residents, I, I could have supported that and agree with that. But we've got something very conflictational here. Uh, and the proposals don't do what the original proposals did. And we see that, and, and those who have to live with this shown us that and told us that as well. Well, I can't, I can't support this here. I think it'd be a breach of a good faith, uh, of the county to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have comments?
I, in, in keeping with good faith, I question why the neighbors were cutting some of the existing vegetation that wasn't on their land. I mean, why would they be, if they wouldn't, why would they be doing that?
And I have not heard, I had been kind of waiting for possibly some of the, um, people that live along Hampton Road to call me, and nobody has called me to discuss anything. I thought about doing a conference call with them, but then I thought, well, you know, they haven't contacted me to, to discuss it, so I didn't know whether I should call them and, and, you know, generate that phone call. So.
Anyone else? You can make your motion now.
All right.
Would you remove your mask so we can hear you a little bit? Nobody's close to you.
Nobody's gonna come up close to me?
No.
Oh, golly, it's so hot. This thing's terrible. I hope I can get this right because I'm changing some of it and I'm, I'm gonna read what I've wrote. I'm gonna read what I've wrote, and then we may have to put your numbers and stuff all in there. How's that? I'm gonna make a motion that we change the size of the tree and the type of tree to a eastern red cedar, three to four feet tall, at a single row on everything but Hampton Road. A double row to be on the Hampton roadside as the twelve-foot with the two, with, with the intervals of the second row, however that was in the first proposal. And I also move that, and, and that the applicant will be allowed to change to the welded wire fence with the wooden post. Does that sound-
Can I, can I maybe just clarify to make sure I understand the motion? So, uh, changing the required tree from the arborvitae or adding an option to do the eastern cedar, I wanna, is it one or the other, or possibly both?
You know, I really don't have a problem with either one.
No, no, I, I don't, I don't either, yeah.
I don't either, so whatever-
I, I just want to clarify, if your motion was to add the eastern cedar as another option, or-
That's fine.
Or actually replace-
Three to four feet for the eastern cedar or the green giant.
Okay. And, and you said two, 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 up to four feet, so if they planted them all two feet, that's okay?
Uh, I thought we were going three to four.
I thought we were going to three to four. I'm sorry, three to four. I thought I said three to four.
If there's a range, my, my feeling is it's probably gonna be cheaper to buy the smaller ones and that's what we're gonna see.
Well, but we're gonna go three to four, three to four.
Okay.
Okay?
Three to four feet tall. Did you say ten foot spacing or the twelve foot spacing?
Ten foot spacing on the single row.
And the double row will stay as it was?
Stay as it was.
Okay.
And the double row would be along Hampton Road, and the single row would be on the rest of the property.
Okay. One, one item maybe that we can clarify as well when it comes to that buffer was there was some discussion about the need for the trees all the way down Hampton Drive versus the trees wrapping around the actual development of the campground. My interpretation was different than what's shown on the plat there, because if you look at, actually, probably where you took those pictures from, that, that area is very low, um, you know, and so for them to plant the trees along Hampton Drive, they would actually be going down in that gully. Our thought was to actually pull those trees up closer to the park itself and, and kind of wrap around the park rather than going down Hampton Drive.
So, what you're saying, it would be below that drain field, or what you're saying is, is to move it up above the drain field? Because the drain field is right here?
So, rather than run down the property line of Hampton Drive, the, the, it would start down the property line, but then it would basically wrap around the campground itself and not go all the way down Hampton Drive.
Where the line takes a sharp angle, just comes straight out with the trees till it hits the road?
Over top of the drain fields, C and B?
Somewhere through there, yeah, somewhere, you know, he couldn't plant them in the drain field, but, um,
Well, it has on here-
That was, that was just a discussion during the site plan processes, is it required for them to be all the way down Hampton Drive through the stormwater management area, which is, is not ideal for us to, to plant trees down there? Uh, would it be better to have it closer up to the, the park itself?
Well, it says on here, future recreational sites, so is there gonna be future recreational stuff down there? Walking trails? So, no campsites? Okay. Can you, you see your statement? Okay, I didn't know you had yours. Okay.
So-
Basically below the cabins.
Correct, so, so following kind of that ridge or, or the boundary of those cabins, rather than going all the way down to that gully on Hampton Drive-
That's fine.
Is, is what was, what was being suggested maybe as an alternative to that. Because frankly, if they're in the bottom of that gully, they're probably not providing a whole lot of visual protection.
And that's all wooded anyway, right?
Yep, it's all wooded down through there.
And, and there's already a requirement to keep that existing vegetation through there, so, um, so that would, that was just an item for clarification, maybe if that was something you wanted to-
That's fine.
Consider, and then I, I guess what I would just ask is maybe if, if, um, a sketch could be provided to the board to kind of show what, what-
Will you put the map up here? Like, it's probably in the, um, agenda.
So, if it moves forward, I think it'd be good to have a map before the board actually takes action to actually-
I think so.
Have something in front of them, uh, as well as, as well as probably a picture of what the proposed fence would look like, just so they, everybody's clear.
I think so. That's what I think he's thinking.
That should eliminate third of the trees. You're talking about coming through here. Actually, this way.
Oh, which way are you talking?
So, coming this way.
Oh, you're coming up, oh, you're definitely doing something different than I thought.
I thought you meant over here.
Yeah, me too.
On Hampton Road. No, so, so these would stay and then it would come around this way. Or with the fence?
Eliminate those.
Eliminate these, okay.
Okay, so eliminate those.
Would you bring a fence up to the trees?
All right.
Bring a fence up to the trees as well?
He's talking about going down this way.
Yeah, I knew, he was talking about cut, coming through here, right? Yeah, would, would you do the fence the same way?
Well, the fence only goes a hundred feet down Hampton Road.
Oh, really?
Yeah. It's been, the, the fence is basically for those folks, so people can't come over to the road.
Where that, where that road was?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, it's going to be going probably about halfway down that distance in that wood line, straight back. Can you go to the next one?
You see what he's talking about now, right?
So, you see where Drain Field C is, right by Cabin Number Eight? It'll basically be coming behind Cabin Three, Four, Five, Six, Seven, Eight.
Yes.
Swimming pool will be between Papa and Hampton Road. The future swimming pool.
The, the future swimming pool's here.
The black, okay.
And, and he's talking about up, up, I think, and up there, right where that Drain Field C is. So, the trees would stop right there on Hampton and then just do a ninety-degree bend and come down, come down.
Right, so there would be a double row from Hampton Drive, um, in the Armstrong property, going down Hampton Drive, and then, uh, they would cut across at a relatively a ninety degree or so, across by Drain Field C, and then across behind those cabins.
Up to C one?
Rather than going all the way down, uh, into the stormwater management area and-
Where do you want the trees to stop there? At C one, two, three, four?
See, um, C one, two, or three from Hampton right now, even with the-
Oh, I figured that. I didn't think you could.
I, I would think somewhere near four.
I was thinking somewhere around six, but that's, C four?
Well, I, I mean, my thought was just around the, the, the development, so, you know, I'd probably bring it to the corner of C one, you know, just to, just to buffer the entire campground. I think it'd probably end up being less trees anyway than, than what was originally shown on this plan going all the way down Hampton Drive.
Is that?
Just a, a question that had come up before, and, um, I think in some of the discussions that we had with Mr. Kundoff and some of the neighbors previously, it was really, uh, kind of intended that it would be, that the buffer would be around the development and not necessarily all the way down Hampton Drive into that, into that low area.
And there's a hill right there too, and it, it's a gully. I know there's a gully right there too.
Yeah, so where you see that stormwater management is, is the lowest part of that.
So, so it would actually help buffer the whole thing from Old School Road?
I think so. I, I think it-
More than the other, the other would have no buffer on Old School, School.
So, come down to Drain Field C, about where that eight forty mark is? See that eight forty mark along Hampton?
Yeah, roughly in that area.
And then come straight up to C one?
And it could be on either side of the drain field there. I don't think that's that big a deal, just-
Well, you don't want, remember, they're gonna grow huge.
You don't want it to go through the drain field, obviously.
You don't want them to go into the campsite either, so, because those are big trees, either one of them.
So, my suggestion is if, if, if your motion goes forward is that, that if we could get some kind of sketch showing the proposed revisions that would go to the board and to the public to, to see what that change actually looks like on paper, would, if-
And that would only have to be a single row, because that's not on Hampton.
If you would add that to your motion, I think that would help
Okay.
People to know what's actually being-
Okay, so the double row on Hampton, the single row behind the cabins and on Armstrong and on, um, between the Ball, yeah, between Robert and Nancy Ball. Okay, is that, have you got that?
So, let me clarify again. The, down Hampton Drive, you're saying double row, but then you're reducing it to a single row as it goes perpendicular to Hampton Drive?
Well, behind the cabins, yeah, because it's not gonna be on Hampton, so why, why does it need to be double if it's not gonna be on Hampton? To me, if it's gonna be on Hampton, fine, make it double, but if it's not-
We will be planting in there in the middle of the sheer hardwoods here.
Yeah. Make that all single and down Hampton, the double.
Okay, so all single row will be ten foot spacing?
I'm missing that.
Okay, do you, should I read back your motion as the way I understood it?
If you want to, yeah, because sometimes we-
Just so it's clear for those on the phone and those here, that, um, your motion was to allow that condition to be changed relative to the tree planting to change, uh, or to, in addition to the arborvitae, to allow the option of planting eastern red cedar, reducing the required height, uh, from six foot to three to four foot, yeah, height, to, uh, reduce the, um, double rows to one, to, I mean, to a single row except for that section along Hampton Drive. And then, um, the ten foot spacing on the single rows, the double spacing stays as wa, as it was. Uh, and then allowing the, the fence to be changed from the split rail with the welded wire fence to welded wire fence with wooden posts. And my suggestion was that, you know, um, part of that motion would be that they provide a plan that shows these revisions prior to the board meeting.
Okay.
So, the board and, the board and the public can see what the, can see actually what that looks like or what the proposal is. That'll also tell how many trees have been reduced, you know, what that number of trees would, would look like now and those kind of things. So, the public, the neighbors and the board would know that before they took action.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion. Uh, do we have a second?
I'd like to second and motion.
We have a motion and a second. We have a roll call vote.
Mr. Doss?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mrs. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Clint?
Yes.
Mrs. Mitchell is absent. Mr. Colby?
Hello?
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Five in favor to approve amendments to Commission Number Four, one opposed, one absent.
Uh, this will go before the supervisors?
Next week. This, so this one is actually, because we didn't have the meeting last month, uh,
So, it's gonna fast track.
We compressed the schedule, so it'll actually go to the board, uh, next week on the nineteenth, uh, in this room. And as soon as we get that plan, we can post that on the, the website as well, so people will be able to see what that looks like, and that'll be part of the board's packet, uh, as well.
Next order of business is application to rezone, application of Bowman Excavating Incorporated applicants. We'll hear from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a petition of Bowman Excavating Incorporated to rezone piece of property that they have at the end of Ikenberry, to rezone the property from A1 Agriculture to B2 General Business, located five twenty-two Ikenberry Road in Blackwater District. The purpose of the rezoning is to allow Bowman Excavating to construct a small office on their property. The, um, existing proposed facility that concentrated a small portion of Bowman Property, you recall from when we visited the site, most of the nine point six five acres will not be affected by this rezoning. Mr. Bowman has proffered, I believe you probably received it today, he has proffered that the use of the parcel consisting of nine point six five acres shall be limited to contractor's offices and facilities and continue to be used for agriculture for the production of hay and other crops. It will generally be developed, as shown on the concept drawing for Bowman Excavating, new office, drawn by Devin Bowman and dated two twenty-one twenty. And then the proffer says, if this proffer is accepted by the commission, we expect no requirement from Franklin County that will affect the existing use or appearance of the property. Staff felt that the impacts of this proposed rezoning are minimal, and we recommend in favor of the rezoning.
Does anyone have questions for staff? Is there anyone who's called? Oh, we need to. Yeah, we need, we need to let the applicants talk. Boy, this is confusing for a simple mind. Uh, we'll hear from the applicants now.
Hey, this is Brent Bowman. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Yeah.
We, uh, we moved over here from West Rutherford County in ninety-eight and started our business here in Franklin County with basically one or two employees. Our, our business has grown. We are now working, uh, out of a office trailer, and we've outgrown that. We would like to build a office building and then on the concept plan, Phase Two, for some time down the road. We don't have a timeframe, but probably be a shop extension. But, but right now, we need, we need more office space, and we would like to have this property rezoned so that we can continue to operate here in Franklin County and serve the Franklin County residents, and hopefully we can be good for each other.
Anyone have- Thank you. Does anyone have questions for Mr. Bowman? If not, we will open it up to, uh, do we have anyone called in to speak to this or anyone outside? If not, we'll go back into regular session. I, I'd like to say that they have a very nice operation. Uh, I believe them to be very upstanding contractors. I can see no problem whatsoever with this project.
I think they've done a great job with what they have.
Was that Angie?
I would just like to say I agree with, with what you just said.
Anyone else have comments? Anyone else have comments?
Very good plan.
Angie, are you prepared to make a motion?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
I, I find that he proposed A one to B two rezoning of Franklin County tax parcel zero four three, zero, 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 two, four, zero, one, Z, located in the Blackwater District, is consistent with the purpose and intent of the county's comprehensive plan and good zoning practice, and will not be of substantial detriment to the community. I therefore recommend approval of this nine point six five acre rezoning.
We have a motion to recommend approval. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. We have a roll call vote.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Doss?
Yes.
Mrs. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Clements?
Yes.
Mrs. Mitchell is absent. Mr. Colby?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Six in favor to approve, one absent.
And this will also be heard next week by the board supervisors. Next order of business is application for a special use permit, application of Smith Mountain Lake Volunteer Fire and Rescue Department. Uh, we'll hear from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a petition of the Smith Mountain Lake Volunteer Fire and Rescue Department to amend conditions that were placed on a special use permit granted by, by the Board of Supervisors in two thousand seventeen, which approved a series of buildings for the Volunteer Fire and Rescue Department. Five conditions were attached to that special use permit that was granted in May of two thousand seventeen. Earlier this year, when the staff was reviewing the site plans for the first phase of the project, we discerned that there was an inconsistency between the graphic plan that was drawn for the special use permit process in two thousand seventeen and the textual narrative that was prepared. The plan showed the building being four thousand square feet, but the text said it was twenty-five hundred square feet. There was an inconsistency. And the staff decided that the special use permit conditions needed to be amended to the consistency between those two square footages. So this request is to amend the condition and the existing special use permit to clarify that the proposed storage building would have a minimum size of five thousand square feet. And the staff did not believe that there'd be any significant impact as a result of this request. We recommend approval.
Does anyone have questions for staff?
Yes, yes, I have a question. And just a clarification on that graphic that's, that I'm looking at right now, just to be sure. I understand that the building we're talking about is on the lower left where it's stairs, uh, four thousand square foot rectangular building there, optional future building. Is that the one we're talking about?
Yes. Yes, sir.
And that's, that's to be made five, the request is five thousand square foot there.
Yes, sir.
And just so I, just so I be sure I understand, um, the other change that the Board of Supervisors made in that earlier process was the Phase Two, two-story ninety-six hundred square foot building was changed to five thousand a square foot. Are you able to verify that that's the case, so I know which one was the other building?
Yes, I think that's correct. That building is being proposed as five thousand square feet now.
Yes, okay, since Phase Two next to it. All right. Thank you, that helps me just, I, I just wanted to validate that, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Uh, does applicant on the phone want to speak? No.
I'm not sure the applicant knows.
They're supposed to be. Um, Andrew Lumsden, I'm hoping he's on.
Andrew, are you on the phone?
Hello, yes, this is Andrew Lumsden here. Uh, I'm with Lumsden Associates, and I believe Neil Harrington is maybe on the line, Neil? Uh, maybe not. Um, Neil Harrington is representing Smith Mountain Lake Fire and Rescue, uh, Volunteer Fire and Rescue. Um, and my name is Andrew Lumsden, like previously mentioned, with Lumsden Associates. We are the, the designer as part of this project. Um, so I, I don't have much to say. I think, um, Harry has, has summarized it pretty well. I think it may just be kind of a clerical error. We are cleaning up. Um, so I think, I, I think I'd just like to thank you for your time, and if I have any questions, you know, I'd be happy to answer.
Anyone have questions for applicant? Well, thank you very much. Uh, is there anyone else on the phone who would like to speak to this petition? Or, nobody outside?
Neil Harrington says he's on the line, but still hears music.
This is Chief Todd Overture, sometime like fire problem. I'm on the line.
Okay, let us hear from you.
Um, I think that all I would, uh, reiterate what Andrew was talking about is this mostly clerical error. Uh, we, we were just trying to clarify that, that side building there could be five thousand square foot. Um, the main building on, if you're looking at the, the site plan that's up on my screen, the main building that was supposedly built, was supposed to be built, uh, Phase One on the right side. Uh, that building probably will not be built in many, many, many years if it ever gets built, uh, due to cost. Uh, we're just looking to get this other building to fit our needs for now and, uh, move forward with that.
Thank you very much. Anyone have questions for him? Thank you very much. Uh, we'll go back into regular session. Uh, is there any discussion?
I'll offer a, a motion, whatever.
Uh, yeah, any, anytime unless you have comments you want to make before you make a motion, but.
I find that the proposed, uh, to allow proposed storage building of up to five thousand square feet, as shown on the proposed master plan to Smith Mountain Lake Volunteer Fire and Rescue, county tax parcel under zero one five zero 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 seven three four one, in the Gill's Creek District, consistent with the purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan and good zoning practice, and will not be of substantial detriment to the community. I therefore recommend approval of the, uh, special use permit request with the following conditions. Number one, substantial conformity, the special use permit authorizes the use of the property for an emergency services facility. The property shall be developed in substantial conformity with the Smith Mountain Lake Volunteer Fire and Rescue proposed master plan dated in number eight, twenty sixteen, and schematic layout dated April eleventh, twenty seventeen, prepared by Frank County Associates and Associates. However, the maximum size of the proposed management and proposed storage building, the amount of three five thousand square feet, and with the additional, the conditions as identified in the staff report items two, three, four, five, and the single, um, motion for approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Uh, roll call vote.
Mrs. McGee?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Doss?
Yes.
Mr. Clements?
Yes.
Mrs. Mitchell is absent. Mr. Colby?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Six in favor to approve, zero opposed, one absent.
Well, this also go to supervisors next week. Our next order of business is application for a special use permit, application, I won't attempt to say his name. I'll go right and let Terry say what his name is.
Applicant. Ready? Yes, this is a request, the applicant is requesting that a special use permit be granted for this property to allow the property to be used for the rental of moving trucks and trailers. It's approximately one point six eight acre site, located at four forty-five Dogron Road, at the intersection of Triple Creek Road. The property is on B one limited business. Land uses in the area, the property is right now being used as a convenience store with gas sales, access to the site is from existing curb cuts on Dogron and Triple Creek Road. There's a mixture of land uses in the surrounding area. There's residential in the area, small lot residential, small lot commercial development. There's also a large ten acre site zoned M one on Triple Creek, which is recently being used by pipeline company for a storage yard. In December of two thousand nineteen, the property was previously considered a special use permit. There was a law of sale of used vehicles on the property. The board denied that request for used vehicle sales at their meeting on December seventeenth. Staff felt that there'd be very little impact as a result of approving this request. You'll see from the concept plan, it was in your packet, that they're proposing to maintain the moving vehicles along one side of the property. It says empty paved lot. And we did discern, reviewing the request, that based upon the stated size of the convenience store, more parking is gonna have to be found on the property to comply with the convenience store parking requirements. Seventeen sites to be needed on the site. Staff recommends approval of special use permit requests for the moving truck and trailer rental business. And that no vehicle repair should be allowed on the property. All vehicles on the property should be in operable, in op, in operable condition. No vehicles or equipment shall be stored within the grass area behind the convenience store. And all moving trucks and trailers shall be located along Triple Creek roadside of the property, as proposed on the concept plan. Staff recommends approval.
Anyone have questions for staff? Uh, is the applicant on the phone?
Not sure.
Yes, applicant is here.
Okay, you go right ahead.
Uh, don't just go ahead with the questions. I'm just hoping for questioning.
Okay, the, I think it's pretty well straightforward. Uh, anyone have questions for applicant? If not, we'll thank you and we'll move on. Is there anyone else either here or on the phone who would like to speak to this petition? If not, we'll go back into regular session and make a decision.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just wanna be sure that everyone received Ms. Mitchell's email today.
Excuse me?
Her thoughts on this issue.
I think they did. The, the email that I showed you, that Sherry had sent out, her thoughts.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay, okay, just wanna be sure everyone received that.
Yeah, the ones up here, I, I don't know about the call in people.
Mr. Colby, did you receive Sherry's email today?
Yes, Colby did.
No more. Ready for a motion?
Uh, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion. I find that the proposed S U P for moving truck and trailer rental business in Franklin County, tax parcel zero seven two, zero, zero, three, four, three, zero, one, in the Snow Creek District, is consistent with the purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan and good zoning practice, and will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent properties or the community. I therefore recommend approval of the S U P request with the following conditions. One, users, uses authorized by this special use permit shall be limited to the rental of moving trucks and trailers. Number two, no vehicle repairs shall be allowed on the property. Number three, all vehicles on this property shall be in operable condition. Number four, all moving trucks and trailers for rent shall be located along the Triple Creek roadside of the property as proposed on the submitted concept plan. Number five, any freestanding signage proposed shall comply with the county sign regulations, shall be of a monument design and shall not be more than eight feet in height. Number six, a minor site plan shall be submitted within sixty days of the special use permit approval and approved by the zoning administrator, showing all required parking areas for store customers and moving truck and trailer display areas, landscaping and other site features as required by the Franklin County zoning ordinance.
We have a motion to recommend approval. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll have a roll call vote.
Mr. Doss?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mrs. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Clements?
Yes.
Mrs. Mitchell is absent. Mr. Colby?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Six in favor to approve the conditions, zero opposed, one absent.
And this will also go before the board next week. Next order of business is application for a special use permit of Karen S. Saunders. We'll hear from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request of Karen Saunders requesting a special use permit authorizing the use of a single-family homeowner property at three forty-five Hermage for short-term rental use. Ms. Saunders is gonna be out of accounting for the next few years and wishes to retain ownership of the house as a possible retirement place. Property is owned A one agriculture and twenty-five one seventy-nine in the county code. As the short-term rentals are permitted in A one zoning districts provided the board supervisors issue special use permit for the use. The lot is six point seven one acres, has fronted on Hermage and a significant access to Smith Mountain Lake. Hermage Road is a private road. Most of the land is open land, however, vegetation along four sides of the property screen no, adjoining properties. Frank County tax records indicate this is a. Franklin County tax records indicate this is a one, one bedroom structure. However, during our site visit, a representative of the applicant indicated that there are two bedrooms in the pro, in the building. Staff did not anticipate any negative traffic impact resulting from the approval of the short-term re, rental of the property. Traffic should be minimal based upon the limited number of bedrooms in this structure. And VDOT has reviewed the application and has offered no comments. I believe in your packet today, there was information from AEP pertaining to the conformance of the existing house with the shoreline management plan. Shoreline management plan was adopted in 2003. House was built in 1989, one year after we adopted zoning. And Neil Holdhauser requested that the commission not send this request forward until AEP had a chance to review the the structure, mineral location of the structure. But the staff feels that the staff feels it would be just as feasible for excuse me. Staff feels it's just feasible for applicant and AEP to get together within the next few weeks and try to resolve the issue of compliance with the shoreline management plan prior to action by the board. So staff recommends the commission recommend approval of the special use permit request for a short-term rental of the property at 345 Hermitage Road. Thank you.
Anyone have questions for staff?
Yeah, this let, I mean, this is new to us tonight, so we had not seen this until today. Now, correct me if I'm wrong. Oh, do you want to hear from anybody? Did we not pass something about docs and stuff or not? Our responsibility now, it's the, it is AEP's responsibility, right?
I think it failed.
Yeah.
Oh, it failed? Okay. I just want to make sure, I'm, I'm trying to
And, and we got this notice from AEP about four o'clock today. We, we did notify them back several weeks ago, but I followed up with Neil today. Actually, per Mr. Colby's inquiry, followed up with AEP today and, and this is the response we got from them today, asking that it be tabled. This item will not go to the board next week, so we have until June. So staff's thought was this item probably could move forward pending, um, you know, or giving them time at least to kind of work out any issues with AEP between now and the board. If the board, if they don't have those issues worked out prior to the board, the board could table it at their, um, meeting. Or the commission could table it here until those items work out before sending it on to the board. So it's kind of it's the pleasure of the commission how you want to handle that. I'm, I'm pretty sure our attorney is still on the line. I, I don't know that uh, we necessarily want to get in the middle of them and AEP, uh, working out whatever issues they have. We could certainly just look at it as the issue of is it a good use as a short-term rental for that property? And any issues they have between themselves and AEP is something for them to, to, to work out. Uh, we could take that stance as well, so. I think I forwarded, Mr. Gwynn, I forwarded it to, to you as well this afternoon. I don't know if you had a chance to, to read it uh, and have any opinion on, uh, maybe how the commission should, should handle that moving forward.
I did get a chance to read it Steve, and, uh, it seems to me that the commission can move forward, um, with what I would call the commission's business so to speak, that is, hold a public hearing and make a recommendation. And, you know, that's between AEP and the homeowner, uh, we will stay completely out of that.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I was, I was under the understanding that was the way AEP and county was, okay. I also
We, I think we would prefer just to kind of stay out of the middle of, of that discussion, if at all possible.
I know.
Right.
And, and I think we do have the applicant on the line is, um, I don't know that we received any other public comment up, up to this time on, on this particular request other than that comment from AEP and
Have they received?
I was just going to say, that's probably going to be a news to them as well because, as I said, we just got that, uh, late this afternoon. So that's something that, you know, I guess they'll have to work out. If I remember correctly, the email references uh, someone requesting that AEP approved the structure there, but I guess they never did.
Yeah, back when the house was sold, I believe they had to
Typically when they sell property
It went to auction. It was an auction property.
Ah, okay.
So, I'm pretty sure that
Completed. Um, but I believe from the records, I can tell, maybe the applicant can share more. From what I understood, that house or that structure was built in 89, which was well before uh, the shoreline management plan. And I guess the only question for AEP to find out or for the applicant to answer is has there been any modification or expansion to that structure since 2003? So.
There's actually a structure on the lake that's being used as a short-term rental that's the same situation. It's not on the Franklin County side, I don't think, because you can't tell what the, the address is. But if anybody would like to, I mean, I'm, I agree with the, with Mr. Um, Gwynn that, you know, we could go ahead and do our part. And then if AEP and the applicant has an issue, then they can work out their their situation. But I had been looking this stuff up the other day and I actually found a dock with a house on top of it that's being rented already on VRBO.
Yeah, I think there's a handful of them on the lake. There's, there's not a lot, but I think there's a handful on the lake that probably pre, pre-existed the, the shoreline management regulations.
Right, exactly.
I, I feel like they can probably get it worked out with AEP because it seems like that structure has been there. You know, for a while, so, but yeah, I think our preference would be to just let those two parties work that out.
And this is only a one bedroom, right? Or have they clarified that?
I believe there was, and again, the applicant can, can address that, but I believe they discussed it and worked with the real estate office to, uh, determine that it actually is a two-bedroom structure. And when we were on site visit, the, the gentleman that was there, I think actually said he thought it was a three-bedroom septic system. But it's only a two-bedroom structure, I believe is, if I remember that correctly.
Okay.
All right, we'll, we'll hear from the applicant if they're on, she's on the phone.
Okay, well, I'm here and I'm Danny Dwyer. I was the one that was here the day that, um, you all came to make the talk visit. And, uh, Ms. Saunders is on the phone from Florida, so, um,
Hello.
So, um, we had clarified with the commissioner of revenue that it is a two-bedroom structure and that we had sent, um, some paperwork, I think Hannah sent some paperwork might be in your file tonight or your papers tonight from the commissioner's office that said the change, that it's been changed to a two-bedroom with four rooms in it. Um, we thank you for answering this and, um, we will be talking to AEP tomorrow about this.
Okay.
Any questions, I feel free to answer them.
The, anyone have
Commissioner, I have a question.
Uh, does anyone have questions for the applicant? How about Mr. Colby or?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay.
Uh, and for things you, you all have been discussing. The word, the, I'm looking at this wording from, uh, the AEP email. And the key sentence here, I want to, um, review Appalachian respectfully request that the Franklin County Planning Commission continue the public hearing in this matter in order to allow time for further documentation of existing conditions and comparison to archival information as to the condition configuration, use of the existing structure. And my question to the applicant is, if we did, um, uh, agree with Appalachian's respectful request, uh, what high burdens or difficulties would that cause the applicant?
Um, depends on what Appalachian power company was, I would think. Um, I mean, they, they can come up, as you all well know, with a lot of different things. I mean, at one point, they, they want a survey of your prop, the survey of the property here would cost a lot of money to do a seven acre survey. And it could be time consuming depending on who you got to do it and what timeframes they have and structures they have. Um, but we're willing to work with the power company on the, whatever they might need, but money could be a thing with them, I don't know. So, does that answer the question? Thank you.
Anyone else have questions for the applicant? Is there anyone else on the phone or in the lobby who would like to speak to this petition? Did you say that there's nobody out there? Okay, uh, we'll go back into regular session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I tend to think that whatever we do is not going to have an effect on AEP and what they're going to do. And, uh, they, if for some reason they can deny them to use this boat dock and, and house, then that'll negate whatever we do. So I, I really don't see any point in us waiting to, uh, do what we're going to do and, uh, you know, the applicant will just have to work with AEP to get what they get. And, and if we waited till AEP made a decision, uh, then that just puts them further and further behind for n, n, no point. And my thinking then, uh, we, we're not going to go against AEP, whatever they decide is going to happen. So, uh,
I feel the same way you do. I also think that, you know, we, we're here tonight. We don't know if we'll be here next month. I mean, unfortunately with the situation the way it is, we may not have a meeting next month. So I'm like you to, not to delay it any further. We could go ahead and make our action and then, like you said, AEP will be the deciding factor between them and the applicant. And that could either null and void what we say, or it can continue on to the board of supervisors.
Yeah. And as I men- And as I mentioned earlier, this one won't go next week to the board, so there's about five weeks
There's already a month delay.
Get resolved before the board even gets to, to hear it in June.
Okay. I mean, I think this property is ideal location for a short-term rental. I mean, there's seven, six point something or another acres of land. It really sits kind of by itself. There is already a buffer of trees between it and the other house on the other side. And then, of course, the other buffer is the 4H center and all that land is not used. It, I don't, the 4H, as far as I'm concerned, it's hilly. They're never going to develop that, so.
Yeah, they're, they're all focuses on the other side.
Right, their focus is on the other side. I actually live in that area, so since 1979, that 4H property has looked the same for, since 1979. So, it hasn't changed. If nobody else has any questions, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion. I find the proposed special use permit to allow the single-family structure located at 345 Hermitage Road to be used as a short-term rental consistent with the purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan and good zoning practice and will not be of substantial detriment to the community. I therefore recommend approval of the S U P request with the following conditions. The S U P, number one, the, this S U P shall only apply to the existing house located at 345 Hermitage Road and shall not apply to any additional homes that may be in the future be constructed on tax parcel The, number two, the Franklin County building official and fire marshal shall inspect the structure proposed for short-term rental used prior to the structure being used for short-term rental to ensure all safety requirements are met. Number three, the property owner shall complete the short-term rental certificate of compliance form and submit the form to the zoning administrator prior to using the house as a short-term rental. The property owner shall at all times comply with the supplementary regulations for short-term rentals.
We have a motion. Are you through with your motion?
Yes.
Motion to recommend approval. Do we have a second?
I'd like to second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. We'll have a roll call vote.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Doss?
Yes.
Mrs. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Clements?
Yes.
Mrs. Mitchell is absent. Mr. Colby?
Abstained.
Abstained.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Six in favor to approve with conditions, one absent and one abstained.
As mentioned, that'll go to the board in June. I think it's June 19th. Got that right, the third Tuesday of June. 16th, it's June 16th, sorry. So we have our final public hearing on the amendments to the Franklin County Code. Tab number six in your packet, I think. Speaking of short-term rentals, as we just talked about, um, you remember we, a few months back had a joint meeting with the board of supervisors, talked about, uh, possible changes to regulations regarding short-term rentals. Um, the board has had subsequent discussions, uh, at two different meetings since your work session to talk about some of those things. And they've made some decisions to move forward on a couple items. And I'll kind of give you a summary of those and then we'll talk about what's, uh, the purpose of this specific public hearing tonight. So, um, they've, they've approved, uh, the advertisement for a public hearing to create the registry that we've talked about before. So, uh, next week at their meeting, they're holding a, a public hearing to create a registry for all short-term rentals to register annually with the county. Uh, there would be a $200 application fee that will be paid annually by those folks that are renting their, uh, short-term rental. Uh, with that, the board also approved, uh, utilizing the services of a third-party, uh, company who will help in a number of different ways. And so they have, uh, signed an agreement with this company called Host Compliance who will, uh, help us manage the number of short-term rentals that are operating in the county. And they basically do that by monitoring all the different websites that people advertise on, cross-referencing those with the records that we have, uh, for real estate. So, street names, uh, names of, um, property owners, you know, uh, Latin long, all that different data. They, they're searching those on a regular basis to determine how many of those are being offered in Franklin County. They help us to determine that. Uh, they will do, this is an annual contract that we've signed with them. They help also with the, uh, taxing issue as far as helping the commissioner They help also with the, uh, taxing issue as far as helping the commissioner determine who has been renting and when they've been renting, uh, to make sure that we're generating the, the transient occupancy, ox- yeah, occupancy taxes that were, uh, that are due to the county. Uh, they also have, um, they also help with the letter writing. So currently, our staff in the commissioner's office, when we find out about short-term rentals, we have to prepare a letter. We send that letter. Uh, if we don't get a response, we send another letter. Uh, so we go through a process to, uh, try to get compliance with folks that are using, uh, their property for short-term rentals and haven't gotten the special use permit or, um, other requirements. They will assist in that as well. They will actually generate the letters and send those letters. Uh, this company will also do the registry that the board, uh, is proposing to adopt. So people will be able to go on their cell phone and actually register their property, make their payment with a credit card for that annual fee. And they can have all that done within a matter of minutes to, to actually register their property, uh, annually. They also, with this program, have a 24/7 hotline for enforcement. So if someone lives next door to a short-term rental and they're having problems with noise or traffic or other things, there is a number that they can call through this agency, not have to call the sheriff's office, uh, on every call. You know, certainly if it's a life safety issue, they need to call 911. But if it's just to lodge a complaint about noise or lodge a complaint about someone parked in my yard, you know, when they were renting next door, or we think this home is having too many people, uh, stay there versus what they're allowed to, the occupancy they're allowed, those sorts of things, they can submit to this company, um, to that hotline. They can submit pictures, they can submit videos. And all of that will help us if we have an enforcement. If, if this continues to be a problem, we have all those complaints logged. And we can use that when we go to court to present to the judge that, hey, this has been an ongoing, continuous problem, you know, in this particular case, um, you know, and it helps build that case for us. And also hopefully take some of that burden off the sheriff's office that, you know, getting called, uh, at one o'clock in the morning, you know, for, for noise and having to send someone out to investigate and those sorts of things. So we, uh, we're going to do this for a year. We'll try it for a year. We'll see, you know, if it's, uh, worthwhile. We think it will be worthwhile. It'll help us to actually probably find more units out there that are being rented than we're aware of. And with the registry, there is a $500 fine that if people don't register, that they will be subject to that $500 fine. So those are some of the things the board okayed us to move forward on, as well as the subject of the meeting here tonight, the public hearing tonight, which was, one of the things we looked at was the penalties. If you recall, the work session, uh, we talked about, uh, there was some interest in raising the penalties for people that violate the ordinance. We are restricted by state code how far we can go with criminal penalties, uh, under the zoning ordinance and with civil penalties. But we did find out that our ordinance was kind of lagging behind what those maximum allowances were. So what we've proposed in your packet tonight is that the, the zoning ordinance, uh, section for penalties be revised simply to say, rather than listing numbers, simply say in conformance with the state code, because we're restricted by what the state code allows us to do anyway. And so as that's amended, this would follow whatever that maximum is. You know, so if the General Assembly next year decided to raise that maximum, our ordinance is written, will, is proposed now to be written in, in a way such that ours could rise as the state code rises. The way it is now, we actually have a dollar amount in there. And so it kind of keeps us at a, at a ceiling. It puts a ceiling on how much, uh, the judge can find someone in a particular case. So the proposal relative to penalties is, uh, to simply take out those dollar amounts and reference the state code allowances as amended. And that would apply for both, uh, criminal penalties, which was class one misdemeanor and civil penalties. The other subject of the public hearing is, uh, looking at those, um, regulations that pertain to short-term rentals. So the other thing the Board of Supervisors did make some recommendations on was looking at some of those regulations that are currently in the zoning ordinance and making them a little bit tighter or adding some additional restrictions. And those are highlighted in yellow in your packet on page four, and I'll just go through those. Those items you see there in bold and underline are already in the zoning ordinance in chapter, in chapter 25, uh, 138. But what you see in yellow are changes that are being proposed. And so currently, uh, on item C, currently we say no more than two adults per bedroom. And we have an age limit of five. Right now, it says any child under five does not count as an adult. And so at the board, there was discussion that, well, a person is a person and it shouldn't be a, a limit. And then there was other discussion that, well, babies aren't going to use the, the restroom facilities and, you know, shouldn't really be counted. They ended up kind of at a compromise, if you will, at, at an age of three. So, uh, rather than, rather than age of five, they came up with the age of three. So any person over the age of three is considered an adult. And so when we're looking at occupancy for, let's say there's three bedrooms, that would be limited to two adults per bedroom, which would be six people, uh, over the age of three, is, is what that change is about. In addition, they, uh, had requested that we include in the ordinance that there be a notice at the house, inside the house, clearly stating what that occupancy is. So if it's, again, if it's a three-bedroom, then that is approved for six adults over the age of three, uh, to occupy that dwelling. And so even though that's difficult to regulate, it's difficult for us to, to see that, we can assure that somebody renting that place will find out that, you know, this is really not approved for 15 people. It's only approved for six or whatever that number is. So that would be clearly posted, uh, on the property. And that will also, we'll do our best to make sure that that's also included in any of the advertisements that go along with that property. So if you or I or somebody else is looking to rent a house that allows 15 people, a house that only allows six shouldn't be, shouldn't be advertising that they can, that they can accommodate 15 people. Uh, the other change is that we've specified a type 2A 10B C fire extinguisher. And we've, uh, specified that that has to be mounted on the wall, either in a common area like the dining room or something, or, or in the kitchen area, rather than stuffed under the sink somewhere and people don't know where it is, you know, if they're just there renting, or, uh, you know, can't find it if there's some sort of kitchen fire or something else going on. We, we want that to be, uh, clearly mounted somewhere where people can see it and know that it's there, uh, and available. In addition, we clarified that, uh, smoke detectors, we had a requirement for smoke detectors, but it was pretty general. So we clarified that to say, smoke detectors must be installed and functioning properly in every living area and bedroom of the dwelling. And that each bedroom shall comply with the building code requirements for egress. There was a lot of discussion, even at our work session, about safety and making sure that, you know, if, if, if saying it's a bedroom, then it needs to meet the requirements for a bedroom, which means it needs to have some form of egress. It's not just a room in the basement that has no way for people to get, uh, out in the case of a fire. And also there would be some sort of an evacuation plan provided in the home. So if you, you've stayed in a hotel before, you know, they always have that, you know, if you're in this room, go down the hall and go out this way. Something like that should be posted in the house to, to identify, there's an exit here and there's one downstairs and there's one out back on the deck, you know, that kind of thing. So again, people that aren't familiar with the, the structure and aren't familiar with the surroundings can at least have that information there to know where those exits are, uh, in the event of an emergency. And then the final, uh, thing that is proposed to be added is in, uh, sub- subsection H there is just to clarify that there will be an annual inspection done by the county. Building official, fire marshal, someone in authority at the county will actually do an inspection to make sure that that fire extinguisher is still there, make sure that those smoke detectors are, are still there and functioning. And the evacuation plan and those kind of things are still there, uh, at least on an annual basis, to go in and make sure they're still, uh, have those items that are required. So those are the changes in addition to the, the fines that I mentioned earlier. If you look through the staff report, staff is actually recommending now that we table this matter. And I'll explain the reason for that is because the, the board is scheduled to act on these changes next week, in chapter five. And so I would propose we just wait to see what's actually adopted, because they could still modify some of those conditions. Then we would kind of have to go back and do it again. So rather than do that, my suggestion is to, to wait, see what the board actually adopts for chapter five. And then we actually just take that same, that same language and incorporate it into the zoning ordinance. So we have it, uh, in both places. We have it in chapter five, which makes it apply countywide to even places that are in non-zoned areas, but also have it in, uh, 138. So it applies, uh, specifically to the zoned areas as well. That's the recommendation. Our, our county attorney's on the line too and might have some further comment. But I think we, we discussed it this morning and think it's, it's prudent just to delay any decision on this until we make sure what the board's going to do relative to those regulations. And then we can, we can bring it back, um, you know, to you at a future date, probably the June meeting, assuming the, the board, you know, acts on it next week. And then what we would do is that, uh, chapter five is only being, the, the board is doing the public hearing on that. Since it's not zoning, there's not a planning commission recommendation on those, uh, amendments to the registry and, and so forth. But any changes to chapter 25 would, would come back through this commission and then the recommendation on to the Board of Supervisors. So that's the information I have to present. We can still hold the public hearing, see if there's any comments. I don't think we've received any, uh, at this point, um, through email or, uh, phone calls or anything like that. And I don't believe there's, there's not anyone here to, to speak at this time. But we could, uh, table the matter till next, uh, month, till June, or simply table it until the board makes a decision and bring it back, uh, to you. However you want to, uh, kind of handle that, will, will be up to the commission how you want to handle that. Mr. Gwynne, do you have any additional comments or thoughts?
No, Steve, I, I agree with you about the difference.
Thank you.
There's no real benefit to holding a public hearing tonight, is it? If there's nobody here, wouldn't we, if we table it, would we hold another public hearing at the next meeting or?
I think we, we, you could continue it and then also take public comment at the next time it comes back before you. You know, that, since we haven't received any comment, you know, maybe you don't want to close it, but just continue it. And then, uh, Mr. Gwynne, would, if it's continued, would we need to re-advertise again? Or would the, uh, current advertisement satisfy for taking additional comment next time it comes back to the commission?
I'm afraid we're going to have to re-advertise.
And that's fine. I mean, it's.
Either way.
We can do that. It's not a big deal. I mean, just to make sure we get any comment, any feedback, we can certainly, uh, you know, re-advertise that based on whatever the board decides at their, their meeting.
Uh, I mean, if, if we closed the public hearing tonight, wouldn't we still have to advertise it next time?
If, if it changes, I guess if, if they, Mr. Gwynne, the question was if we close the public hearing tonight, do we need to, to re-advertise it next, next time anyway?
Yeah, probably, because if the board makes any changes to it, you're going to want to make sure that what you understand to review for this section, uh, is consistent with that. And, uh, now, if you had the public hearing tonight, board makes their changes, then you're golden.
So it's up to you. You know, we, we could close it tonight and then if there are changes, we could re-advertise it, if that's the way you want to handle it.
I, I think I would prefer to continue it.
Okay. The next. Okay. And, and I'm assuming that it would come back in June, but it may, it, you know, maybe July. So if we do continue it, I would just maybe word it such that, um, you know, at a future date, you know, and it would be re-advertised before being placed on the agenda.
Somebody like to make that motion?
Can I ask a couple of questions?
You sure can.
I'm sorry. I'm a little confused, because to me, if it's going to the Board of Supervisors, aren't they the last say? Or is they just using this as a workshop?
Well, there's, there's, there's kind of two different things going on parallel at the same time. So they're amending, they're proposing to amend chapter five of the county code, which is not zoning. It's the community development section of the county code. And they don't necessarily need the planning commission recommendation to make changes to that section. So they're moving forward with making changes to that section, um, those regulations I went over just a second ago and also the registry. However, when it comes to making changes to chapter 25 of the zoning ordinance, they do need a recommendation from the planning commission, that's state code requirement. And so really what we've kind of done is we jumped the gun a little bit, uh, and got ahead, uh, of the board. And after more thought, thinking that, well, if they change any of this, when they meet next week, we're going to have to do it all over. So let's just wait until they do what they're going to do and then we'll, uh, come back and run it through the, the process like it should be. And so does that answer your question? It's, it's kind of two different, uh, two different paths we're working on. If you recall, there was discussion about wanting those regulations to apply in county zoned areas and non-zoned areas. So this is kind of our attempt to, to make it apply in both areas of the county. As well as the registry is not just a registry for the zoned area, it's a registry for all short-term rentals, uh, in the county.
Can we make a comment to something we might, would like for them to change or look at?
Certainly.
On your item G, about the fire extinguishers?
Yes.
Coming from a firefighter family, I'm pretty crazy about safety when it comes to that. When you, um, reference, see, to me, this would be saying you only need one, one extinguisher in a house. Most lake houses, most, are multiple levels with kitchens on both levels. And if you have a fire in a kitchen, you haven't got time to go upstairs and get a fire extinguisher and come downstairs. I would like to see that there actually be a fire extinguisher on every level.
Okay, on every level or in every kitchen?
Even in every level. You've got children playing upstairs, if they catch a closet on fire, if they playing with matches. I mean, you just don't have time. With all the plastics we have nowadays and flammable things, I just, I think that it's safety. I would like for them to consider that.
We can do that.
I agree with that Debbie, I think that's a great moment.
Yeah, that's no brainer there.
Okay. I will definitely mention to that, mention that to them.
Would somebody like to make a motion to continue this until?
I'll make a motion. Oh, are we going to continue or delay? Same thing?
Uh, continue the public hearing, I believe is a way to do it, is that until advertised again.
Well, I think if, if you're going to continue it, then, um, we can, well, trying to think of the, the appropriate wording for that. I think we had said that we really want to have another advertised public hearing. So I think the, the motion maybe would be just to, um, re-advertise for another public hearing once the Board of Supervisors, uh, adopts the changes to sec- to chapter five of the, uh, county code. So once they make those changes in chapter five, we'll be good to go to make the same changes in chapter 25. Does that make sense? Did I?
I might not now.
Can you do that with a so moved?
So moved.
We will, yeah, we will reschedule, we will reschedule and re-advertise the public hearing on this item once the board makes the amendments to chapter five.
Okay.
And it may be June, it could be July, you know, depending on, you know, how that's, how that's adopted. Right now, it would be the only thing that, that you would hear in June. So if you want to have a meeting just to do that, we can do that, or we could save it till July.
Seems like a lot of trouble just for that.
It's, it's the only item, so.
You're going to have to start writing these motions up.
Although I, I know Hannah just lives for this stuff, so.
So you can include in your motion to bring it back in July, advertise it for a public hearing in July. If the board really wants to move it along, they can hold their public hearing in July as well. Shouldn't have any issue if they adopt it in chapter five, they shouldn't have any issue putting it in chapter 25.
That is true. Yep, we, we mimic their rules, they should go along with them. So how do we get from here to there?
Well, we so moved.
We need a motion?
We need a second?
Or we just?
We're gonna do it. Yeah, I think just the motion would be to re-advertise this for public hearing in July after the Board has made the changes, their desired changes to chapter 5.
We have a motion to that effect, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Dawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mrs. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Clennett?
Yes.
Mr. Abset, Mr. Colby?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Dicted favors to re-advertise and decide for July? Zero opposed, one upset.
See any public comment?
Another suggestion. Y'all talk about bedrooms, and believe me, and I guess it's because I look at so much rental property, we've got these bunk rooms.
Close. We ready to adjourn?
We still have a citizen's comment, and I want to know what this is about.
Which one?
Support amendment that was... Oh, okay. As left over from Board Supervisors, they didn't take it home? I've been sitting here wondering about it all day, how that counted. Do you want to? Do we have anyone on the phone who'd like to make a citizen's comment, or anyone in TV land who'd like to call in and make a comment?
I got that one.
Let's give them a minute.
I would like to hear Debbie's comments, this is Angie, whoever's one drop call that we stay on, I'd like to hear her comment about the bedroom.
I can call you later.
Well, I, I can tell you that the Building Department has a very fine definition of what constitutes a bedroom.
Okay.
And, and between the Building Department defining a bedroom by egress, and the Health Department by septic system, it don't matter what you call it.
Well, my question's not so much that part, is that now you've got people that have bunk rooms, I mean, like there's two sets of bunk beds in a bedroom for children, so...
But that doesn't enter into it.
So two people, so...
Right.
What you're saying is, is even if you have those beds in there, you're still can only have two people in that room.
Right, yeah.
That's the way it's been, it's, the way it's always been written, the only change that the Board has made so far is going from five-year-old to three-year-old, making a, making a four-year-old's now an adult.
Yeah.
Having, having built houses for years, lots of people have offices because they're not allowed to have a bedroom in that space because of the Health Department.
Right.
But when this building inspection, fire marshal, those will not be bedrooms, when, because they're not real bedrooms.
Right, and, and if, if they have one of those that was never approved as a bedroom, what they'll have to do is, is make alterations to it and get the CO for their structure changed to actually show that it is in fact a four, legal four-bedroom home.
Yeah.
We're going through one now where it's, it's three, it's actually approved for three bedrooms, but they've been advertising it as six, and so they went back and actually upgraded the septic system, and so, actually this week, a building official is going in to make sure that all those six bedrooms meet the criteria for a bedroom and comply with the Building Code requirements for, for a bedroom, and then each one of those will also have to have the smoke detector and so forth, so, yeah, I, there are still gonna be some of those cases where, you know, they've got multiple kids in one room, and, you know, it's, it's a, difficult to enforce, you know, but setting some criteria, I think, is what we're looking at, is, you know, there, there, there are some legal criteria, so God forbid there was some sort of, you know, disaster, some sort of issue, you know, at least from a legal point of view, we'd be able to say, well, they were only really supposed to have, you know, eight people, and there were 21 people in the house, you know, something like that, you know, that's all we're trying to do is say, you know, there is a maximum here that is in compliance with the county's regulations.
And of course, this doesn't apply if you invite all your neighbors to come over, or your family, or whoever, and if you're not renting it out, you just...
That's right.
I mean, it could, all of this could happen, and has always happened, but not to rent it as long as, and if we do yearly checks with the building inspector, they're, they're pretty good at telling you what's a bedroom and what's not a bedroom. You won't be sneaking anything, buy them on furniture or anything else, so, between them and the Health Department and the septic system, it'll be a pretty narrow definition.
So I think all the things we're doing so far is kind of the first step in trying to, to have a better handle on the, the short-term rentals and how they're being conducted. The next discussion that the Board is having is whether or not to make any more changes to the zoning ordinance, for instance, it's been requested by a lot of folks in the Waters Edge community, which is RPD, that allows short-term rentals by right, there's been a lot of folks in that neighborhood that have requested that the Board change all special use permits to require a special use permit, and so the Board has not made a decision on that yet, that's still something that they're discussing, you know, whether or not they want to make all of them require a special use permit, or still allow some to be by right. So trying to take some of the stuff that we had agreement on, where everybody seemed to be in agreement, make those changes, and then there's probably gonna be a second, you know, second discussion, if you will, about some additional zoning changes, potentially. All right.
Anybody else have any comments? We are adjourned.